Welcome back to beautiful scenic Burlington. We're here on Gos Court at the Miller Center. It's around 9:40 AM on Monday, March 3rd. After our conversation with the shelter, I don't know if she's the director, but the person running the shelter, Taylor, who came out to talk to us last night. And we're here after hours to see if we can take a look at the inside of the shelter and just see what it looks like. As we were coming toward the shelter, we saw the CAIP van leaving. CAIP, that's one of the police social work teams. And I believe they're one of the teams that transports the shelter guests from the city center to the Miller Center here in the New North End. We do have the notices still up. Building closed due to emergency cold weather shelter. Authorized personnel only. But let's see, maybe maybe someone is in there? Alright, I don't see the desk in the front. Yeah. I don't know. Is the door open? Nope, doors are locked, so... Lots of reflection on the glass, so there's not much to see really. The, uh, but let's, let's just see what, what we can see. So the gym doors appear to be one closed, one open? Gosh, it's, it's really, yeah, one of the doors is open. But alright, and I'm not seeing much in there. Maybe, uh, maybe we'll have a chance to take a look. We'll raid around a little bit and see if anyone comes out and lets us in. It's a beautiful sunny day. It is cold. But it's not as bad as it was. Hey, how you doing? We've got some transportation vans. I feel like I saw a van, like the one on the left, or do you call it a van, a bus? Arriving at the shelter last night as we were leaving, bringing some guests. Yeah. I have a feeling that all the guests have been, have left at this point, just a guess. This shelter, the mayor was saying often sleeps 80 or more people. Wow. That's on top of all the other shelters we have in town. Like the Elmwood Pod Community and the Pearl Street Cots Way Station, which is their new overnight shelter. Or the shelter that is on Shelburne Road, which I'm not sure what name that's going by right now. The Champlain Inn, maybe? Alright, let's be nosey and maybe we can catch someone's attention and ask them if we can come in. I really wish there wasn't so much glare. These, these double doors make it so that I get a very good view of what's behind me. Oh, here. Hello. I just saw one person in there. But they don't, um, they're not coming out. Maybe, maybe they'll get someone. It was suggested that we arrive between 9:30 and 10 o'clock, which is what we did. If we want to take a look inside after hours. I think right now it's just about 9:45. Who is Captain William A. Molton? The Miller Center is dedicated to his memory. Dedicated by the City of Burlington. December 18th, 2008. Right, and there's also a team program that operates out of this center. A lot of activities that go on here, as you, as you can tell by this sign. Pickleball is a popular indoor activity in the winter. How you doing? Hi. Oh, those folks are going inside. Oh, hey. Maybe they, uh, maybe I can ask them if I can get access. Um, oh, ooh, no, door's locked. Alright. Hmm. That's too bad. Is that Joe McGee? I don't know. I just saw a hairstyle that reminded me of, um, former city councilman who now works in the mayor's administration. I thought he worked as a communications director, but I'm not sure about that. So, it's interesting. I guess those folks were associated with the shelter. They came, they were saying something about plastic bins. And then they walked over here. So, my understanding is that a lot of the people at this shelter use drugs and, uh, but they're not allowed to supposedly use drugs in the shelter, so I mean, one would assume that they go outside to use drugs? Or, or they just take a break for the night? I kind of wonder about that, you know, I don't really understand how, um, these various substances work and sort of what the schedule is for using them. Some, it sounds like you have to use every few hours? And others probably not so much? If you have to come outside in the middle of the night, gosh, that would be cold. Here we are at the backside of the Miller Center. Well, the side anyways, not the back. Frog and toad. Interesting. Uh, this snow, because it's been so warm and then it froze really hard, almost supports my weight. Wow. Anything still going on? Oh, there's some folks in there. Hello? Maybe they'll come out to talk.
Who is he?
Hi, how you doing?
I'm doing okay. How about yourself?
Oh, good, thank you. I was wondering if I could come take a look around?
I have to talk to the management. No.
Oh, who's the management?
No.
Do you, can you tell me who I should talk to?
John.
John?
I said no. You can't come in.
Okay, when, when does it open up? Yeah, I see that, sir, yeah. Um, I was talking with Taylor. You know Taylor?
No, who's Taylor?
She's the, the woman who runs the shelter?
No, there's no Taylor. Is there?
There's no, there's no Taylor from Champlain Housing Trust? Hey, Joe?
The building's closed.
Yeah. Um, I was talking with Taylor last night and she said I should, if I wanted to come after hours and take a look inside the building, that I should come between 9:30 and 10?
Okay, well, the building's closed for cleaning.
Okay.
So, not right now.
Alright, do you, uh, can you tell me when the building opens?
Well, they have to set up for the polling location tomorrow, so I, my guess is that it's actually not going to be open today.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, uh, Joe, I, um, can you tell, can you tell me?
I'm not interested in being interviewed for your YouTube channel, Todd.
Can you tell me your title? I just forgot it.
Deputy Chief of Staff.
Deputy Chief of Staff, thank you.
Yeah, have a nice day.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks. Thank you.
Alright, so... Alright. Joe McGee says they're closed for cleaning. And uh, he's not interested in talking. And he, he didn't indicate that this building would be open at all. Until well, he didn't seem to suggest that there wouldn't be a time today to come in and take a look. Alright. Hey, how you doing? Thanks for voting.
Yeah, of course. We're at court and duty.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, we do have people dropping off their votes here at the ballot box. So, City of Burlington residents only. Wonder if it says? I don't know what the last day you can drop your ballots off is. I wouldn't want to say the wrong thing and lead anyone astray. Tomorrow is Tuesday, March 4th. Um, and it's, uh, it's when the polls will open and you can come and vote in person. Unfortunately, we weren't given access to take a tour at the time Taylor suggested. And strangely enough, the gentleman, was his name John? Um, he didn't seem to know Taylor at all. He said to speak to Sarah. Um, I assume he's referring to the Sarah who is our, maybe her title is Special Coordinator to End Homelessness? We have some, another voter? Uh, so perhaps we'll, uh, ask Sarah if she can arrange a tour for us? Maybe before hours? We learned last night that they start setting up the shelter at 1:00 PM. And the shelter opens at 5:00. Hello?
Not sure who you're saying hello to.
Oh, sorry. Just being friendly. Um, and, uh, uh, the shelter opens at 5:00 and then it closes at 8:00 and, uh, people are transported back to the city center and I guess they have cleanup going on. Oh, hi, Mark. How you doing?
Good. How you doing?
I'm doing great. I was hoping to get a tour of the Miller Center. Alright. Oh, so this is our city councillor, Mark Barlow, who is, he said, standing in for the Ward 7 city councillor, Evan Litwin, and taking a tour. That's great. Joe McGee mentioned he didn't want to give an interview for the YouTube channel. Now, we are on YouTube at Beautiful Scenic Burlington and we're also on X and Instagram. Feel free to check out our content there. Our long form videos go on YouTube. But we often post introductions. Now, you know, the first part of the video to Instagram and X. It's a few minutes after 10 o'clock. Take a book, love a book. Hello? A beautiful day to vote.
Yes, it is.
Um, I didn't think about all the voting traffic that we get. People are dropping off their ballots in the drop box. Are you voting, sir?
No, I'm, I'm bringing them, uh,
Oh, okay, sir. Sorry, I didn't mean to be nosey.
Well, somebody needs letting in or I'll have to leave these in the box for just anybody to take. Oh, I don't even close you to emergency. Well, I think I am all comfortable now.
There, there are some folks in there. Maybe if you knock, they'll, they'll come and let you in.
Yeah, and the folks in there are definitely active. They just don't want these checks to get stolen. There's way to fly them through. They'll figure it out.
If they ask me, should I tell, tell them anything?
Uh, I think it'll be self-evident. They're expecting them.
Okay, thank you. Alright, some checks were stuffed into the door. Hopefully those will go to the right place. This AARP-sponsored outdoor fitness park was organized by Fitlot Outdoor Fitness Parks, making exercise more accessible because strong neighbors make strong neighborhoods. Alright. Look at that. Ladder. An elliptical machine. Some parallel bars. A bench. Various height pull-up bars of all sorts. Stair machine. This looks like could be a chest press. And some steps of various height. It's a chilly one today. We're waiting out here. Hopefully Counselor Barlow will be able to tell us something about his tour. Oh, that's good. Some sand buckets for cigarette butts. Not too many on the floor, on the ground. And here we have the American flag and the Black Lives Matter flag. Hopefully this doesn't mess up the picture, but right now I'm wrapping a glove around the phone in the hopes to keep it a little bit warmer a little bit longer. These, uh, conditions are not conducive to long videos. The phone gets too cold and the battery dies. How are you doing?
Good, Gil.
Good, thanks.
Boy, that thing feels pretty full.
Oh, yeah. People are coming every few minutes to vote. Yep. Enjoy the day. That thing feels pretty full. Wow. Ah, okay. Just gonna walk around a little bit. It's, uh... It's chilly. You know, the feet get cold standing still for an extended period of time. Maybe I should have worn four pairs of socks. I mentioned that Mark Barlow is a city councillor. He is the North District City Councillor. That district covers Ward Four and Ward Seven, which roughly speaking make up the New North End. And the Ward Four City Councillor is Sarah Carpenter. And the Ward Seven City Councillor, which is where this is located, is Evan Lipman. Have a good day, sir.
I'm not leaving yet.
Oh, okay.
You're making people feel uncomfortable. Got to come and get my worker.
Oh, they don't need to feel uncomfortable.
We don't need you to be here recording either.
I just wanted to take a tour.
Well, you're not going to get us a tour. Well, if not today, you're not.
Maybe next time. Maybe next time.
Not when the shelters are here, you won't.
Why not? A lot of the shelters in town are run and I think owned by private corporations like COTS and Champlain Housing Trust. Though those shelters are, to my knowledge, largely funded by public tax dollars. This shelter is run by the city. I was hoping the city would provide more access to the public to take a look. But I'm not getting that vibe today. Perhaps next time? Maybe if we come early before any residents or guests have arrived at the shelter, we'll be able to take a look at what it looks like when it's set up or nearly set up. One question that I had was, where do all the COTS go? Because they have they must have you know, 80-plus COTS set up, I assume, if 80 people are staying here. Are they stored at the Miller Center?
This is good till 4:30 today, it said.
All righty.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering when the last drop-off time is.
It's 4:30.
Because I thought there were some that you could drop off like day of.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
But I don't know either.
It's not saying it on this, but I just did it, so if my memory serves, these type of things, 4:30.
4:30. Thank you.
Maybe if you were at City Hall or something.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure. It's a beautiful day to vote.
It is.
Hi, John. Good morning.
Good morning.
We don't pickle all today.
No. Right. I knew they work on it more, right?
Nope, they're pickled. Yeah, but voting is in the community room.
I would like to get coffee.
I'm shaking my hand.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, have a good day.
You too.
Thanks.
Two ballots. Aren't just teasing that woman. Hi, Mark. Is there anything you'd like to say about the tour?
They cleaned the facility up as I would expect them to.
Great.
Everything seemed seemed picked up, clean, and I think they're probably ready to reopen to the public.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good one. I appreciate you stopping by. I'll be there. This is where you vote for Ward Seven and Ward Four voting is at the Elks Lodge. It's no longer at the St. Mark's Church. It's 10:40 AM. I can keep you off camera if you want. If she doesn't want to be on camera, I could keep her off.
I've just got to drop it.
All right. So as I was saying, it's 10:40 and according to councillor Barlow, have a good one. Things are looking cleaned up and almost ready to be opened back up to the public. So I think that'll do it for today. We didn't get the tour we were hoping for. But at least we at least a city councillor was able to take a tour and tell us what he saw. Goodbye from beautiful scenic Burlington.